Okay, I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, May 14th, 2019. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Benford. Fuqua. Garcia. Gebhardt. Marquess.
Here.
Myers. Sargent.
Here.
All right, Kathy, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome. This evening, I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to provide and create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful and civically engaged lives. And this is our second-to-last meeting in this room. The last one will be May 28th, and then on June 11th, we will be meeting in the Superior Town Hall. And so that's the McCaslin exit, right past the Costco. And it's just right there off the street, if you haven't been there. And our plan tonight on our consent agenda is to cancel the last meeting in June, if you're wondering why I'm saying there's only one left. So if that passes, this is our first of the three last meetings, is one way to put it. All right, so as always, we'll start with our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Board President Marquess, members of the board. We have, I believe, eight days of school left, and so lots, lots happening in our schools. At the end of the year is a great time to be able, for me, to attend a lot of our celebrations, and so wanted to kind of talk through several celebrations, and then a group of students I had a chance to engage with over the course of the past several weeks. So on April 25th, we held our student and art, BVSD student and teacher art exhibit, exhibition at the Derry Art Center, which was really a great place for our students and teachers to showcase their art within the galleries. But what's really cool about this event that we do is that our students and educators in the cosmetology program at Boulder Tech are able to give a couture-driven runway show featuring hair sculpture and makeup designed, and this show was, the makeup and the hair was inspired by Dior. So it was really great to see our students' talents in action. I just want to thank those folks within our district and those students who made that possible. It was just an amazing evening to celebrate the arts in BVSD. On Wednesday, May 1st, I had, was invited to participate with the Lafayette Youth Advisory Council. And so for those of you who are unaware, the city council in Lafayette has a youth advisory council made up about 20 students. Most of those students, I believe all those students were actually students within our schools that are in the Lafayette area, and had just a great conversation. They had great questions, had about an hour, an hour and a half to engage with them. And it was just really a wonderful event. I want to commend the Lafayette City Council for engaging our youth in such a meaningful way where they're able to not only pay attention to what's happening, but have opportunities to make a difference. Thank you to those of you that were able to attend the Impact on Ed Gala, which was on May 3rd. And I want to thank Impact on Education and their executive director, Allison Billings, for what I thought was a wonderful event, celebrating BVSD and helping raise money to help support the many, the many things they do to help us. And last Thursday, I had my chance, had a chance to go to my first BVSD retirement celebration, which was a really great event. And I'll share with you what I shared with the retirees. It was a bittersweet moment. Right? We're always happy for folks as they end their careers and want to make sure that we send them out in the right ways, but sad at the same time because I saw about 150 experienced, talented people leaving our doors. And so it was a wonderful event. I think that it was our partners, the Premier Credit Union, were the sponsors. Want to thank them. It was just a really, really nice event. And then finally, over the course of the next week, I'll be attending seven graduations, I believe I have on my calendar, one Friday, two Saturday, two Sunday. So as somebody who spent a lot of years as a high school administrator and eight as a high school principal, there is nothing quite like a high school graduation. I can't wait to be able to shake those hands and celebrate with parents and families for the kids that are crossing, crossing our stages across the district and just excited for them and for their futures. You know, it's a celebration, it's a celebration for kids and families, but also educators as well. It's culminating act of after 13 years, many of these students who have been served by our educators in schools. And so I look forward to seeing all those parents and students and families out at our graduations, high school graduations, this, this coming next week, week and a half. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Anderson, board members? No? Okay. So we're going to move on to our next item, which is public participation. And before I go through the whole item, I just want to know if our public participant who signed up is here. Is there? No? Okay. All right, so the, yes. So with that, we're going to go to our next item, which is board communication. Who would like to start? Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm going to miss the graduations because my youngest son is graduating college on the East Coast. It is always a special time and one of the funnest things I've ever gotten to do as a board member. So congratulations to all the graduates. I'm sorry I can't be there. But we were all at the superintendent's honor roll just a few minutes ago, and that was fantastic. You know, the academic, the athletic, the artistic achievements of our students, the achievements of our staff, their service to the students and the community. It's always a great event, and congratulations to all those who were honored this time around. Also, thanks to Assistant Superintendent Rob Price, and also, I believe Scott Stevenson was there when we toured Justice High about a couple of weeks ago. First time I'd been there, and it was great to get a sense of the issues in that facility. And also, Principal TJ Cole gave us a very thoughtful and enthusiastic overview of the program, and look forward to C-Box thoughts on Justice High and to helping them improve that facility, which clearly needs some help.
Richard.
Yes, speaking of Justice High, do we know anything about the BEST grant?
Our meetings start tomorrow.
Good luck. Hopefully, we'll get it.
You're accusing yourself.
No, I know, I know you're accusing yourself, but I hope you, I still hope we get it.
We have more cash than we've had in a long time, so that helps.
Good boost. I just want to acknowledge a couple of individuals here in the audience today, Abby Ocampo and Damari. Can't remember her last name, but anyway, they're both with El Paso, Engage Latino Parents Advancing to Not Comes. And they're here just observing the way a board meeting is conducted because they're basically in training right now because of their community organizing efforts that they're going to be doing. And they'll probably be coming back to the board with some of the issues that they've identified. So thank you very much for being here tonight. And this morning, we also attended the event at the Community Foundation Servant Boulder County on cultural brokers. And they made a wonderful presentation on 18-month project that the Community Foundation was involved in, and I was one of the people involved in that particular project too, where they were looking at how might the Community Foundation improve the conditions to leverage cultural brokers in decision-making at institutions. So that was one of their, what they call the human, human design question that, that they put on themselves, on ourselves. And Rob was there this morning, and a few other BVSD school employees were there this morning. And it was really a great effort that they've conducted and, or that we conducted, and hopefully it'll have some stronger ramifications in the future.
Richard, can you share the presentation if it was online?
I will certainly ask for it, yeah.
Thank you.
Just a couple of quick things. We went to Kitty and I, and Rob went to the Penn Gala. And that was a very nice event. And really, it's great to see all of the community support that the gives to Penn and the good work that they do. So hats off to Penn and our support for them, and look forward to the partnership in the coming year. I was able to do the Justice Tour after you the next day with Scott, and was able to do it with Izzy. And Izzy was late because he had been driving a student to a bus stop, and it got stuck in traffic. And it just kind of shows the extent to which these administrators are willing to go to support their students. And we'll wait and see what happens after this week on Justice. Also went to Impact. Thank you, Rob, and everybody who was at that. That was a really nice event. I don't know how much they ended up raising at the end of the day, but they had a very energetic auctioneer, who at the end just started auctioning off asking for money, which I thought was kind of, with no prizes, which was kind of an interesting thing. But I think it actually worked, to just get people just to give money. So I thought that was interesting. Was there also with Randy for part of that. And then the only other thing I'd talk about is the parody evening. It was really nice to see the parents. This time, they were mostly from Manhattan, and so the principal from Manhattan was there, and Margaret was there. And while there were some really painful stories to hear of some of their concerns, it was just nice to feel like they could come and talk to us about what their concerns are, and so that we can try to go forward with addressing some of those concerns. Because I know it takes a lot of courage to be able to come forward and talk about what's going on with your kid in a school. And so thanks to Ari also for facilitating that, and for you, Rob, for listening. I thought you did a great job listening to some really, like I said, some painful stories that were going on. So I look forward to continuing to attend the parody events when I can, and I think it's doing great work. Thanks.
I just have a couple of comments. Just, I also appreciate the work of Impact on Education and their role in helping to fund some of the initiatives out of the Boulder Valley School District. It was a great event, and I saw a lot of new faces there, for those of you who've been. This was a big change of venue and everything, so it was, it was well done. And I also just wanted to thank Laura for helping us organize the interest meetings for prospective school board candidates. So we were able to successfully pull off three meetings, and we had a lot of interest. And it was, it was fun to see new people or meet new people, kind of think about what they're thinking about as they consider running for the school board. And of course, the school board elections are in November, and you need to pick up your petition by August 7th if you're interested. So tell your friends. And then the last thing I just wanted to recognize is that I, from a perspective as a parent, last week, it was a hard week because of the shooting incident in Douglas County. And I think we all feel for Douglas County, what they might have gone through. And I wanted to thank our staff. It's hard for our staff, I would imagine, to think about those possibilities and what their role is and the gravity of that situation. And the fact that both of my kids felt safe going to school was a real testament, I think, to how well our administrators are handling what's a really difficult time in our state as we have moments where we feel unsafe or we feel threatened. And I feel like our security staff is constantly considering what are the best solutions for us to keep our students safe. And it is a top-of-mind issue in the Boulder Valley School District, both from hardening and also from a mental health, you know, point of view. So I don't want that to go on, not saying, not mentioning that. So, so that's all I've got. And the next information is, item is information items. And we put on legislative update because the session ended, and a lot of things happened. And so the only update here is just if anyone wanted to comment or have questions about bills that were passed or bills that they hoped that was passed. We are going to be talking about the sexual education bill later tonight, which is impacted by the new sexual education bill, I think I have the title wrong, that was passed. So any questions? And Full Day K, of course, passed? Sam?
On the civics bill that offered language for more inclusive presentation within civics curriculum, is that to start this next school year, or?
That's my understanding.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and I think we'll be looking at that this, before June, on June 11th, or?
Definitely be looking at it.
Yes. Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Other questions about legislation, Kathy?
A bill passed, I think it was Senate Bill 204, that allows for pilots on accountability and improvement plans. And I'm hoping that we could be one of the districts that thinks about how we can improve our accountability systems going forward so that it's a more inclusive, community-centered, student-centered focus in the way we look at accountability and not so laser-focused on just test scores. So I think there was $400,000. It's, has a learning agenda in it. So I just think it would be an interesting bill to look at as we're developing our strategic plan and looking at measurements as we go forward. Because I think we are uniquely situated, given our staff and our, and the talent of our staff and our parents, to be able to look at that. And I also understand that there was some confusion around the Full Day K email that went out and the money that was supposed to go out for implementation. And I think we will be working on trying to clarify that. Bill's looking at me confused, but I think we'll get some clarifying. Because the money that's supposed to go out was just, it was written as a grant, but it really is not a grant. It just had to fit under BEST.
This is not the email we sent out?
No.
The email from the state. Okay, just clarify.
Sorry, I need to make that clear. But it made people, Randy, sorry. You sent that email to all the superintendents. But anyway, I think there'll be some clarification coming up because Boulder should be able to get some money for FFNE out of that with minimal effort. So I think we'll see that.
Any other legislative questions, updates? I can't remember what happened with the REED Act. I think it was minor tweaks.
There was one other bill, and maybe Kathleen, I don't know if you, this was such a, to me, had potential for huge impact, but nobody followed it. It was a bill that allowed the legislature to look at the socioeconomic demographic impacts of legislation. And I think it'd be really interesting to find out. It was Leslie Harrod's bill if it passed, because I just think it would be really interesting to follow up on looking at the socioeconomic and demographic impacts of some of the bills, because I think we pay attention to that at the district. And so it might be really interesting to find out if that was something that, and I can get you the bill number later.
My other bill was the asset. Susan, the asset program can apply for financial aid. So I wasn't sure how that impacted us and if we needed to communicate that opportunity out quickly. And I don't understand the bill completely.
Move the bill again?
Asset. It's, I don't remember bill titles like Kathy does. But it was about students that are in the asset program being eligible to apply for financial aid for enrollment in universities.
I believe, if I'm not mistaken, they're eligible to apply for the COF aspect of financial aid.
Okay.
It's the Colorado Opportunity Fund.
Okay. So that's, that could be a new opportunity, I think, for some of our students, but I'm not sure. All right. Okay, so our next item is the 7.2 Weighted Student Staffing Allocations Memorandum of Understanding with Boulder Valley Education Association. For those who were at the negotiation with our Educators Association a year or two ago, this is one of the commitments that they made to explore. So here we go.
We have a powerpoint that we're hoping will work as we try to signal the back room to advance the slides. So next slide. Maybe it's not coming up on the screen. Oh, there we go. Well, we're getting close. Anyway, we will start with an introduction of the team that worked on this. So I'll just have everybody come up real quick and introduce themselves.
Hi there, I'm Lori Hatendorf, and I teach at Bear Creek Elementary. And I'm also at the, on the negotiation team and on the exec board for BVA.
Good evening, I'm Nancy Piercy. I am an ILC teacher at Centaurus High School. I am also on the negotiating team and am the treasurer for BVA.
Good evening, I'm Patty Delgado. I teach Spanish at Centaurus High School during the morning, and I'm BVA Vice President.
And Mike Rados, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources.
And Bill Sutter, the Chief Financial Officer. So real quick, this is the overview of what we'll go through. We'll go through the contract language that was in the MOU, timeline, some definitions that we worked on, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page as we're talking about this concept, the outcomes and next steps for this. So, next slide, as I'm trying to sync up with what's on the screen here. So again, a couple of thoughts about this. So really working on empowering our leaders to meet student needs through that allocation of resources. Next slide. Focusing those resources where they're needed based on the student needs. And then the last slide, driving resources based on results. So next, the next slide is the contract language that Mike will go over.
So Bill's going to go through some history too around the MOU. This, there was an MOU that was established back in 2016 on resource allocation. But last year, as many of you had attended the BVA district negotiations, you might recall that we did create an MOU, an MOU around resource and allocation. And that purpose was to create a group by May of 2018 to develop a consistent district-wide formula for distributing weighted student staffing based on specific student characteristics that were previously recommended at the MOU that I talked about previously in 2016, and also aligned with the proposed Colorado Modernized Student Finance Act.
Next slide.
The charge of that, of that MOU and this committee was to recognizing that students have diverse needs, learning needs. This MOU is intended to create a work group that would address the access to these resources. Next slide, please. So in this contract MOU, there would be factors such as what the ideal school would look like. And again, this has been something that been talked about earlier in previous years with the minimum resources and programs that school needs to be successful, consistency between schools to define and identify students who received weighted resources and staffing, and alternative characteristics such as frequent behavior referrals, excessive absences, social emotional needs that may be used to consider a student as exhibiting high needs. Okay? And then the impact of all available resources on student learning. Next slide, please. So, the work group will, at this point, recommend actual student factors and the weight of these factors to be considered in the allocation formula. And then they'll recommend criteria for evaluating the effectiveness of weighted resource allocations that coincide with the district UIP goals. This committee would also make recommendations to inform the ongoing district budgeting process. So now Bill will be talking about what this timeline that I talked about earlier, where this memo came from.
Thanks, Mike. So to go back in history a little bit, so this started in the spring of 2015 with the first MOU with the association to look into differentiated funding. There was a significant committee that was put together, a task force, I believe it was titled. And there were some recommendations that came out of that. Over the course of a year, those meetings occurred. And there was a report done to the, for the board. So it's on the January 10th of 2017, Board Meeting on Board Docs, that was the final report out of that work group. So a lot of that recommendation was tied to some specific allocations, tied to new dollars, and perhaps while well-intentioned maybe wasn't the best model for allocating resources that could be designed. So next, their work with the superintendents across the state and the Modernized School Finance Act started to come about in the spring of 2018. While it got introduced into the legislature in committee, it never made it out of committee. And that work really, some of the language in the MOU really was driven by that Modernized School Finance Act, which allocated resources to schools based on student characteristics. So it was really aligning with the idea of what we were planning on doing. And we really wanted to come, bring these two pieces of work together. So when it didn't make it out of committee, it kind of took that idea off the table a little bit. At that same point in time was when the signature collection was going on for Amendment 73, which also included some, a significant amount of new resources, which would have allowed for allocating new dollars, but also had a component of differentiation of resources based on some student characteristics. As we got into the fall of 2018, we know what the results of Amendment 73 were. So basically what I'm trying to paint the picture here is we had several pieces that were placed in front of us that we were trying to manage to, but then got pulled away as we were working through this. So it was informing, we didn't want to do a whole lot of work or spend money on developing a whole system that didn't align with something at a particular point in time. And also, when additional resources aren't available, it makes it pretty challenging to come up with a new way of allocating resources. The work out of that first MOU group, one of the tenants of it was really that there shouldn't be winners and losers in an allocation of resources, a reallocation of resources. There should be winners and bigger winners. And so really, that takes new resources into the system to happen. So again, after Amendment 73, then we really started getting into the kickoff of the development of our new strategic plan for the district. And the group really felt that we, it would be somewhat inappropriate to preemptively come up with an idea, and it was much better aligned to include the work in the work of the strategic plan. So again, that's a very long timeline, many changes that happened along the way, but the work all continuously feeds off itself and better informs kind of the next phase of the process. So this next slide, real quick on some definitions. So this little diagram tries to paint the picture that there are three different concepts that get talked about in this allocation of resources in some sort of differentiated manner. They're all kind of the same, but they're also all kind of different. So differentiated resources, concept behind that is, say, allocating an extra assistant principal to a school with higher needs or higher population concentration, not based on specific students per se, but more sort of the characteristics of a school. A student-based budgeting system really does drive down to that student level and is frequently tied to an allocation of dollars, per se, where the school would then purchase and have a whole lot of discretion around how those dollars are allocated for hiring staff and, and class sizes and some really significant amount of flexibility around how each individual school works with that. A student-based system may or may not allocate additional resources based on student characteristics. So it could have it, it could not. And then weighted student allocations, again, that's that idea that whether you're allocating FTE, which we actually do in the district, allocate additional FTE in cases, in some cases for student characteristics. So at the elementary level, we weight the paraeducator allocation on students in poverty, free or reduced lunch. So we actually have some weighted allocation formulas, but they're not dollar-based, they're based on FTE. So again, when they sort of all come together, the terminology is used somewhat interchangeably, but they are somewhat different. And so I just want to make sure that we're, as we move forward in this conversation, that we're clear about what it is we're talking about when we're saying we're, we're going to look at something, we're going to do something. Next slide. So the outcomes. So what the team did, we reviewed that prior work that was done back in 2016. Again, really looked closely at what that Modernized School Finance Act was doing and how it was going to allocate resources. And that would be one kind of model that we, we were looking at using to allocate resources down at the school level, Amendment 73, and then really getting into the strategic plan development. And this next slide really And this next slide really points out where this work is coming together really nicely with the strategic plan. So, in the strategic theme number two, provide schools and educators with responsive and customized supports to best serve students. So, again, you can hear that language of customized and serving students and responsive, so really driving down to the student level. The objective underneath that strategic theme, to ensure allocation of resources is responsive, accountable, and focused on student growth. Again, focused on the student level and that driving down of resources. And then the strategic initiative is to implement a needs-based allocation system. So, that's kind of a very broad brush description of what this might look like, and there's a whole team of people that'll be working on this going forward. But again, so this work has informed the next stage along the way, and now we're at the place of really including it in the strategic plan moving forward, which I would suggest is a great place for it to be because that is the work of the district going forward. And so, last slide, the recommendations coming out of this group. To continue the development of the distribution of resources through a weighted and/or differentiated methodology, so again, could be either or, what will best meet the needs of schools or students, and then align that implementation with the district strategic plan so that we're really working off the same songbook, so to speak, as we're working on improving student achievement across the district. That is the end of the presentation. If there are any questions.
Board members?
So, what's your timing? What's your timing of being able to implement the, this?
Thanks, Bill. So, at our, our next board meeting on the 28th, we'll be presenting to the board and the public our, our strategic initiatives and our teams that have been developing the strategic initiatives. And once we have our strategic initiatives established, what we're working on over the summer is the phasing in of, of the strategic initiatives within the strategic plan. So, as you, as you'll see in a couple of weeks, we have a number of initiatives that you can't all do at once. And so, as we present next week, or next week, the 28th, you'll be able to see the phasing in of when, of when this work is gonna be starting.
So, are we gonna wait until we get more money from someplace before this happens? Or are we currently looking at our current budget to see if we can't make some adjustments or shifts in that current budget?
So, don't wanna, you know, spoiler alert for the 28th. These are, these are things that we'll be talking, but I think it's, it's a little bit of both. If new money comes in, what's our plan? And then what are we doing with the money that we have? I think that the work that we started with the Initiative Inventory in the fall really sets the stage. We've been working again with District Management Group over the Phase Two of that, which is really looking at our budgeting processes. And so, pairing budgeting processes with not only new money, but, but existing money, and creating urgency around finding new money to pay for initiatives that help us with, with weighted student funding, student-based allocations, whatever the differentiated resource needs are, is, is something we're all gonna be looking at.
'Cause we already have some initiatives gone in, in terms of the resource allocation, right? Like the counselors that we hired, et cetera. What other, what other initiatives do we have in the pipeline that will keep us, keep this thing moving forward?
Well, the fact that it's in the strategic plan, right, holds us accountable, holds me as superintendent accountable, as you all hold me accountable to this. And so, I would say that, that it, it's going to be part of our core work, which the strategic plan will be. I would say that we've, we've brought forward some things in the budget that you might considered, some, some initiatives, but the majority of those initiatives we'll be working through with the action planning teams that we'll see as we bring forward the strategic plan.
I echo Richard to some degree. I mean, I, I agree that finding new resources, so there are winners and bigger winners, is ideal, but, you know, I'm not counting on it. And so, I think we're gonna have to have hard conversations about reallocation.
Does this impact allocation to charters? Should we collaborate with charters and include discussion on male levy allocation?
In, in relation to this conversation or strategic plan, or?
Yes.
So, the recommendation, to be clear, the recommendation from this committee is to embed this within the strategic plan. And so, your question, as we develop our action teams, should we be getting input from charters as part of that action team? That's certainly something we could consider.
I think it might make sense. It's 10% of our students.
Other comments?
So, Rob, you said that, I just was hoping to get a little better clarity around how this interfaces with the work that you're doing that we talked about in the fall, because this isn't program-based, so how does this interface with the programs that we're gonna be evaluating? And that might be a place we could also find additional resources if we start looking at programs that are, are not working. So, I was just hoping to get some clarity around that.
That is also part of the strategic plan work that you'll see on the 28th. So, we wanted to bring this forward. As part of the MOU, one of, one of the requirements was to bring a presentation to the board, which is what you saw today. I probably should've kicked us off with that. And we wanted to get this in. And so, many of your questions will be answered as we, as we talk on the 28th. We're building the excitement for the strategic plan. So. Teaser.
All right. Kitty?
I just wanna thank you all for doing this work. It's really important, and I'm very pleased that we're moving forward with this.
Yeah, and I just wanna echo what Sam said about existing versus new allocations. It is a hard conversation, but I think it's still just a conversation, so that's fine. All right, any other?
Just one comment, if I may. I, I wanna compliment BVEA for their partnership in this because back in 2016, as I discovered this MOU and where they're at now and what they wanna do, is they're definitely wanting on, the strategic plan, really wanting to align this with that strategic plan. So, I, I really commend them for that and their partnership for that. So, thank you.
So, I just wanted to add as well, we've had a very collaborative work relationship. It seems like it's been a really long time. I think the flexibility that shows that this group working together and continuing putting our kids first and focusing on that, what's the best for our students at BVSD, is just, you know, that's our main focus, no matter how many times we have to revisit and relook at it. And the wonderful news about this is that it is all falling together into a strategic plan, and we did anticipate that you were gonna be still wanting to know more. And, you know, as promised, you will hear all about that next board meeting. But we have done a lot of work, and we've looked at every angle of this. And yes, more funds would be great, but really, our focus is to do what's best for kids and the most impacted schools. But it's, that is, the equity piece stays in there. And as you know, we've done a lot of work with equity, making sure that every single step of the strategic plan, equity is embedded into every single thing we do. So, I just want, you know, I just wanna make that comment, and we worked really hard on this, and we'll continue, you know, doing that and looking at better allocations for our students.
All right, thank you. Okay, so our next item is item eight, action items consent grouping. Is everyone doing okay? Anyone need a break? Okay. So, 8.1 Personnel Items, 8.2 Approval of Minutes, April 16th, 2019 Special Meeting, 8.3 Approval of Minutes, April 23rd, 2019 Regular Meeting, 8.4 Acceptance of Donation, Crestview Elementary, 8.5 Approval of Contract for Bloomfield Heights Middle School Tennis Court Abatement, 8.6 Approval of Payment of Insurance Deductible, 8.7 Approval of the Architectural Design and Engineering Services Contract for Bond Funded Improvement Work at Foothill Elementary School, 8.8 Cancellation of June 25th, 2019 Board Meeting. Okay? 8.9 Non-Renewal of Contracts, 8.10 Resolution 1913 to Authorize a Resolution to Accept Bids on Authorized Construction and Maintenance Projects During July of 2019, 8.11 2019 20 Grant Special Education School-to-Work Program, Colorado Division of Vocational Rehabilitation 19. Okay, so, any items that board members, do I, do I look for, which one do I do first? Okay, are there any items board members would like to pull? Shelley?
I'd like to pull 8.6 Approval of Payment of Insurance Deductible.
Okey-dokey. Item 8.6 is pulled from Consent Grouping. Are there any other items board members would like to pull? All right, hearing none. Before we begin discussion, I need a motion to approve the remaining items on consent agenda.
So moved.
Okay, seconded by Richard. Laura, will you please call the roll on Consent Grouping?
Benford. Fuqua.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gephardt.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next, Shelley, do you wanna talk about pulling 8.6?
I just wanted to pull it for a separate vote.
Okey-dokey. Board members, any discussion? All right, Laura, could you please call the vote, I, sorry, I need a motion to approve 8.6?
So moved.
Okay, seconded by Richard. Laura, would you please call the vote? On 8.6?
Most definitely not.
Fuqua.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gephardt.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so our next item is nine, action items. 9.1 is a Resolution 1912 Extending Deadline to Negotiate Charter Contract with Summit Middle Charter School Summit Academy. And so, this is, we've done a couple other extensions. If you've read the resolution, this is another extension. So, any questions for Rob or Kathleen?
I was just gonna make a motion.
Oh, okay.
Before we, so I move to approve the extension of time to negotiate the Summit Charter Contract.
Okay. Do we have a second? By Shelley? And discussion, Kitty?
How long are we going to have this hanging out there? I mean, I know that's a rhetorical question because we vote on it, but I still have the same objection I've had, which is we have an approved charter school sort of hanging out, and there's no resolution to that.
Okay. Nice, Richard. He's like, there is a resolution. Kathy?
Kitty, my understanding is that they have hired somebody whose job it is, is to try to help negotiate this and move it forward, so it's in a little different posture, which is why I'm comfortable moving it forward because they're taking additional steps and just need additional time to be able to look at it, just so you know. That's my understanding at least.
Any other questions or comments? All right, Laura, would you please call the vote?
Benford. Fuqua.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gephardt.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Sargent.
No.
Motion passes.
Okay, so our next item is 10 Policy Study. 10.1 Board Policy Study, IGAE Health Education and IGAI Human Sexuality. And I think Kathleen is going to help walk us through this discussion with the changes in the, with updating our policy, but also reflecting the changes due to the legislation that passed on this topic and will be signed into bill soon.
Are, are you okay with me staying here? Okay, since this is my first time really addressing you, so. As our board president mentioned, we did have a bill that has passed and will be signed, may not be signed yet. I read at least the headlines as this bill traveled through the legislature, and we don't need to go back and talk about what it would've done because it was substantially amended in the final hours before it was adopted. And it has a fairly limited scope, the changes. But a few things that I think are really important to get into policy. So, the two policies we're going to talk about, this board has not had an opportunity to revisit since 2010, so we do think it's timely. This bill does not change the definition of comprehensive human sexuality education. It left the definition that was on the books. The bill does go on to define a number of other terms that I think are helpful, both to the education program and for the board as we look at the policy itself. In particular, the bill does advance definitions of things like consent, what it means specifically to have medically accurate materials. It also clarifies that instruction does not include, and I'll find it faster in the policy than I'm apparently finding it in the bill, that instruction does not include, and I put this definition is on if we start with I-G-A-I, the policy specific to human sexuality. So, in the red line version, this top definition comprehensive human sexuality education, that entire definition has been in the law for a long time. But it wasn't in our policy, and it wasn't really accessible to our principals and to the educators that we've tasked with implementing this policy. It's the definition just below that on page one, the definition of human sexuality instruction that I believe is relevant and from the new legislation. It clarifies that what we're really talking about here are those lessons, lectures, or presentations that are given by school staff or staff on these topics, and clarifies that instruction does not include student speech. I think this is an important clarification, and since it is now in our state statute, my recommendation is that we bring it forward and put it within the policy itself to make it a, as we like to say at CASB, a one-stop shopping, where we really have all of the key information in the policy itself. So, the other significant change, I believe, to this policy is if you, the board looks at page two, talking about conditions, the, the board already had in policy some statements of values that I believe remain appropriate to include in policy. Item three that reads, as mandated by state law, this is from the new legislation, where the legislature specifically prohibited explicit or implicit teaching or endorsing of religious ideology, sectarian tenets or doctrines, using shame-based or stigmatizing language or instructional tools, employing gender norms or gender stereotypes, or excluding the relational or sexual experience, experiences of lesbian, gay, bisexual, or transgender individuals. This again is verbatim from the new Human Sexuality Instruction Bill, and I think was an important addition to the policy to really reflect the legislature's direction. The other point really of this red line version is to be very clear for our principals and educators and families, what the parents get notice of, and then what their ability is to opt students out of instruction. This is a place where honestly, I think our state statute's just a little bit messy. It sits in a few different places, and if you read it closely, and I looked at the Colorado Association of School Boards' model policies, the language is slightly different when we're talking about comprehensive health education and comprehensive human sexuality instruction. What they have in common is that in both places, there's an expectation that parents get noticed two weeks prior to this instruction beginning. And that notice needs to give a detailed list of the topics that are going to be covered, and it also needs to put parents on notice that they have the ability to excuse their child from that instruction. Even though this two-week notice requirement has been in the law for a few years, it was not in the board's policy, and I think it's really important that we make sure our principals have exactly the language that they need to follow in order to make sure that we're complying with this important parental right that is codified in statute. So, with that, I've talked through then the red line recommendations I would make to policy I-G-A-I. I wonder if you might have questions or feedback about that one.
Yeah, I'm just, want you to say more about instruction does not include student speech. Can you elaborate on that, please?
Well, I, I, sure. I think that this is a concept, honestly, that I think that this is a concept, honestly, that we're familiar with. We know that we are responsible for instruction to our students that is consistent with the curriculum and state law. I think it has been less clear perhaps over the last few months what role student speech has when we're looking at these, at these topics, especially human sexuality education.
So speech in the classroom?
Speech in the classroom. So I think what this is intended to address is if a student brings up an issue that would fall within the definition of sex ed, sex ed instruction under state law, and they happen to make that comment in October, and it's not part of our formal unit on sexuality instruction, so there hasn't been notice to the family, there hasn't been a form to opt out. If that speech is coming forward from one of our students, it's the responsibility of the teacher then to respond appropriately. But it wouldn't trigger the notice and the opt-out provisions that are specifically recognized.
Thanks, that clarifies that for me. Thank you.
Sure.
So can I ask a follow-up on that? How do we communicate that to our parents? So that they know that if they have an expectation that any mention of sexuality should be noticed, but really we can't guarantee that, how do we get the word out so that there aren't any surprises?
I think it starts with real clarity in our policy. I think this is going to be a significant improvement for our principals and our educators. Then I think it's working with your really talented staff to make sure that the opt-out form, the notice of topics that goes to families, the implementing regulation of this policy is very specific and that we know how to do it.
Okay, and then I have another question on the piece that says, or reads, oh goodness. On the, the relational aspects of the, that you can't stigmatize. Oh my goodness, I can't find it. So explicitly or implicitly teaching or endorsing religious ideology or sectarian tenets of, you know, of the different groups mentioned. I would imagine that that won't be a topic, that that principle is a thread throughout our entire unit of sexual education. So is there a way that we can clarify in policy that there won't be an option to opt out of the part of sexual education that mentions homosexuality, for instance? Or is that implied in this legislation that when, when it says that you can't not talk about those things, but could you put it in one unit? Or is it impossible to teach this unit without having that, that as a, as a guiding light throughout the whole course? Am I making any sense?
No, I think you are. And, and I do think that the intent of this legislation and the way that it presents these conditions around instruction in this area. Instruction in human sexuality education is a district choice. You don't have to teach it. If a district chooses to teach it, then there are certain requirements as to what that instruction actually looks like. And that's really what this language is getting at. You can't just teach part and not, uh, parts of it and not really fulfill the entire state definition for what a comprehensive program needs to look like. So those requirements speak to what the school district is obligated to teach if we choose to teach it, which is not the same as saying to a family, you can or cannot opt out. Our obligation is to teach and to provide families with a detailed list of the topics we're going to cover. It's then up to the families, if they want to opt out, to complete the form and let us know that. I do not read this legislation to say, you're not permitted to opt out of the areas of sexuality education that may be the culturally sensitive pieces, that integrated, comprehensive aspect of it.
So you, so you could opt out?
I believe that the state law allows families to opt out, yes.
So then is the burden on the teacher to be able to say every portion of instruction that might include a relationship, a homosexual relationship?
No, under this law, the obligation is, two weeks before the school is going to implement a comprehensive human sexuality instructional unit, to tell families that they're going to, what topics they're going to cover, and then allow families to excuse their children from that instruction. I, I hear the question perhaps that you're asking, which is, is it going to be practical to say, you can come in for discussion of this topic, but not this topic?
But it says a specific portion in the, in the redline on top of page three, the ability to excuse their child from a specific portion or portions of the instruction. I just think we might want to clarify whether teacher's going to be able to specify the moment in the instruction time when she might, or he might bring up, or they might bring up a topic that is sensitive. So I, because I wouldn't want a teacher to be lobbying thirty specific opt-out requests from sentences of instruction. I mean, this sounds almost impossible.
Right, and I hear what you're saying. And I really do think that that is going to have to be an issue that we anticipate when we're presenting to families what the topics are. Transgender isn't a topic under this, right? It is a, it is to be incorporated into the entire instructional unit, the way I read this legislation. Which means when we are giving families lists of the topics that we're going to cover, we have to make sure we're really thoughtful with how those align to standards and materials and to make sure that it isn't isolating elements that really aren't discrete topics of human sexuality instruction.
And I, I just hope we can make it really clear so that our teachers don't have to field lots of questions about, well, couldn't you just talk about homosexuals on Tuesday? And have, I, but I, I think this is real. Like I, so, and I don't, and I agree with you entirely. I think that the spirit of this legislation is not to have, is to have that. It's just that's part of our universe and we're going to talk about it multiple times in many contexts because that's who we are as a society.
Right, and I, I do understand that. When I think about the board's role in this policy process and the way that I, as your attorney, and the staff can support this policy development, my intent was to get some direction from this board on the big policy itself, which is the piece of this that you need to adopt. And then to work with staff, who I've got lots of emails from already because this topic's on this agenda, to make sure that the regulation that we next need to present to you, as well as the exhibits, are really careful in fleshing out the rest of these implementation issues that you've identified.
So would you anticipate an exhibit that might be a standardized opt-out form that everyone uses so that there's not a lot of nuance between schools?
Yes.
Okay. Kitty, sorry.
Yeah, I have a question too. And it, under that parental approval system, is that language from the law? Or is that our policy, proposed policy?
The caption itself, parent approval system.
Uh huh.
That was in your existing policy, but I don't think that is what they use under the current statute. So I could certainly update that section header to make sure that it reflects the current law.
I don't know that we would want to do this, but to make, to avoid what Tina was bringing up, should it, could it be, you know, opt out of everything or go to everything and those are the two choices? Or is that too restrictive? Oh, and I have one more thing when that's done.
I do, the language about from a specific portion or portions of the instruction is specifically in our state statute, which is the reason that I brought that precise language forward.
Then the other thing I wanted to say is I would love to see something at the beginning of this policy saying that the board recognizes that comprehensive sexuality education is, encourages, no, not encourages, but helps students to, to be less likely to be sexually active, that it, it reduces teen pregnancy and that it also makes them less vulnerable to sexual abuse. Yeah, I mean, not those exact words, but yes, because frequently in policy, we say, the board recognizes that. And you have some things that, you know, are prefacing why we have this policy.
Okay, other comments? Shelley?
I think if we were going to put that kind of thing in the preface, we would probably need some documentation that that's true and that's really not what policy's for. I'm not saying it's not true, right? But if you're going to say that, you, you should quote a source.
Well, that would be pretty easy to do.
Yeah, but we don't usually do that in policy. So maybe you could say something very general that isn't quite what you said, but yeah.
Richard, comments?
No, I'm just reading the first two paragraphs of human sexuality. It seems to me like it's general enough to be able to capture some of that.
Sam?
Would you like me to specifically address I G A E, which I've mostly talked about? This is the health education policy. The board has always had two separate policies on health education and human sexuality education. So in, in this policy, which was substantially easier since it wasn't really touched on by the recent legislation, I've incorporated again the definition of exactly what we're talking about because I believe that's really important to giving us clarity around the notice and opt-out procedure. Then on page two, we incorporated and made it consistent with the sexuality education notice requirement. There will be a need for a specific form as I revisited the materials in preparation for tonight's discussion. You'll see that I redlined reference to a specific form. But following up on your previous question, I do believe that we will be required to have a form. And with your permission, I'm going to re-insert that language to be clear that we need one. The only other thing I would point out is I know that we've had some interesting discussions about the headers on your policies, regulations, and exhibits. I did go back to the board policy on policy adoption and would encourage the board to allow us to simply, for a policy, you will have a specific adopted date, the date that the board takes action on a policy. For regulations, those become effective thirty days after we've provided them to the board in a regular meeting as an information item. So I think going forward, the header on a regulation should have an effective date. It shouldn't say adopted. And when we look at exhibits, those should just be revised because those are the items that you expect the staff to update and keep current so that your policies are being properly implemented. And I think that will help us in future discussions be really clear as to what the board's role is and whatever we're looking at.
Kitty?
So I have another question about opting out. So it sounds like parents can opt their child out of anything in health ed. Is that correct?
That's correct. That exists in state law.
Okay, so like, okay.
Can I ask?
Like if they don't want to hear about dental health, they could opt out of dental health.
Can I ask a question about I G A E? On the section that speaks about definition? Is the, is the definition from a state statute?
Yes.
Okay, and so, and can we add to, to the words, family life, education, and on family roles and expectations? Can we add language that says that we won't, just like in the other one, we won't have a limited view of what a family looks like and what roles and expectations might be? But instead use the same language that is a more expansive view?
Certainly. I wanted to give you the state law as a starting point because I know it's something we've discussed. And again, something I think is important as direction for staff. But we can certainly add to it to make sure that this definition reflects this board's intent.
Okay, it's, there's an implicit understanding of the word family role that sometimes I feel people can be limited about what that might look like. And the other piece is whether we can, in policy I G A I, explicitly call out that the discussion and instruction around gender identity is not a part of sexual education? Or is it, or is it implied in the definition of it?
I think it's implied by omission, but that's certainly language that I could work on.
Okay.
Well, I was wondering if it's implied in I, what is this one? I G A E. I, specifically, what, what is meant under definitions by hereditary and developmental conditions? Is the development of one's gender identity included in that? And there, you know, and therefore, opt out is an option, apparently, as I read the policy.
You know, I think that we are going to find some other legislation from this session, in particular, the bill that you referenced on representing of other groups in our civics education. We see the discussion by this legislature of the contribution of transgender individuals really addressed throughout our state statute. I think because of the way it's addressed, it seems clear that it's not only addressed as part of the comprehensive human sexuality instruction. It's not limited to that discussion. It's not sex ed. It's a concept that we see in many other areas of school district curriculum and instruction. Perhaps some language that says, simply because a concept appears as part of this definition or policy doesn't mean that it is a sexual topic, that where it appears in other places in the curriculum, it can be appropriately addressed. I mean, I could work on something for that, Tina. And maybe as we look at the regulation itself, get some more suggestions from staff on it. I wish there were something that just was that crystal clear in law. I think it's certainly implied in the law. It's just not stated that specifically in our state statute.
Other comments? And just, so our next step is we would look at this again after we consider these changes and you think about what can be done and we take another crack at it?
I think with the feedback from tonight, I think it makes sense that I go and have some conversations with staff, think about the input that you've provided, and bring it back as another study item at the next regular meeting.
Okay. Board members, what else? All right. Okay.
Yeah, I just want to thank you, Rob, and you Kathleen, for doing this work. This is really hard work, but it's just so helpful. Whenever we run into a policy that we can't interpret or conflicts with another one, it just makes doing this job so much more difficult. So thank you for doing this. Appreciate it.
Okay. All right, so I think our next item is agenda setting. And just a reminder, next Tuesday, we're doing our prioritization with Heather. So this is your last chance to get topics into the hat. Okay, so Richard's going to jump in.
I'd like for us to talk about. A bullying policy, standalone.
Okay. So Laura, can we add that to our list for Tuesday?
So where in policy is bullying covered now?
That was in the RFI that just came out, yeah.
To answer your question, Kitty, it's spread throughout different policies.
Anything else? Okay.
Well, the, the, I, I really would like to talk about the biliteracy seal. I don't know if it's in here.
It's on there.
Is it on here? Okay, great.
Is it on there?
Thanks.
Okay. Anything else, board members? All right, with that, I'd like to adjourn.